Okay, excellent. So let's get started. My name is Kathleen Bates. I am the Say What Program Manager. Uh oh, I see. Give me one second, just so you can see me. Okay, I think if everybody could go ahead and turn their cameras off, that way everybody can see me when I'm talking. Okay, we'll move forward. Okay, so like I said, my name is Kathleen Bates, and I'm the Say What Program Manager. And I'm very excited again for you all to joining, for you all to join us today and to learn more about the program itself and what all is available. We are going to have three presenters. One is the Say What Teen Ambassador, one is the Say What Consultant, and one is a Say What Sponsor. So I'm very excited for you to hear from all of them. And let's get into it, so you can finally meet them.
What's going on, guys? My name is Blake Cater, and this is my first year as a Texas Say What Teen Ambassador. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. This is, as I just mentioned, my first year as a Texas Say What Teen Ambassador. But a little bit about me personally is I really enjoy playing tennis, competing in debate competitions, and showing animals and livestock shows. I'm an upcoming sophomore, and I plan on being a Texas A&amp;M University graduate with some sort of real estate degree and pursue a degree in real estate law. So a little bit about my Say What story, because that's really what y'all came here to learn. I went to my first summit as a seventh grader. It was the San Antonio Summit, and I learned so much about tobacco prevention. My dad uses tobacco products. My grandfather used to use tobacco products. And my great-grandfather unfortunately passed away from using tobacco products. I have a family, all the generations of my family have used tobacco products. And my goal is to be the first generation of my family that is completely tobacco-free. So I went to my first conference last year, and it was life-changing for me. I saw the work that the Teen Ambassadors did, and I just knew that that's what I wanted to do. So I applied in the fall of that year, and thank goodness, I was accepted into the program. And it was such a boost of confidence, and it showed me what I can really do as a Teen Ambassador. So what I've done so far and what Say What has actually helped me accomplish, I was able to meet with my representative, who's Representative Jan Lozano. And we, and I explained to him who I was and what I planned to do. And he taught me so much about legislation. And he even told me that if I wanted to come back to him sometime with legislation about tobacco prevention, he would definitely sponsor it. So hopefully, I'll be seeing him again sometime soon. Last week, I was very fortunate to meet with my senator, who's probably some of y'all senators as well, Senator Judith Zaffarini. She has passed more anti-tobacco legislation than any other senator in the state of Texas. She's passed legislation about making tobacco companies report what they put in cigarettes to the Texas Health Service. And it's just so incredible, all the things that she's done. I plan to do so much for tobacco prevention in Texas. I plan on being, using my entire high school career as a base to prevent my friends and other youth all across Texas from using tobacco products.
What's up, you guys? My name is Ruben. It's very nice to meet you all. I hope you're all having a wonderful day. I'm so glad you guys decided to come to the Say What Conference, woo-woo, and to go ahead and come join this session. I am a Say What Consultant. I base my position in the Say What programs. I basically watch over and help guide the Teen Ambassadors through whatever they need or whatever they may need help with. That's my position and my role. I, this is my first year as a Say What Consultant. I was also a Teen Ambassador for two years and have been involved with the Say What program for going on five or six years. So that's very exciting, yay. And also to kind of tell you a little bit more about myself. Like I said, 2016 was my very first conference. Very exciting, very good. And I originally was a part of a high school group called the Drug-Free HTB. That was our very first school name. Ms. Burnside will probably talk to you a little bit more about it later. Oh my gosh, I went to the conference, had an amazing time in person. Wow, really life-changing. I saw the Teen Ambassadors, wanted to know what can I do more in my community and also for my, for my state. So then I worked in my community and then also got to become a Teen Ambassador to where I can work statewide. I'm als, I also attend Texas State University, class of '23. Woo, eat 'em up, cats! I don't know if we have any Texas State alumni here in the session. If not, it's okay. Really quickly, I wanted to show you guys some growth. So in the image to the left, it's my very first picture I ever took of myself in some Say What gear. And in the image to the top, that's my most recent image of me being able to go a part of the program and go and talk to some middle schools. My Say What story kind of begins whenever I was younger. When I say younger, I mean like toddler-younger. So both my parents used to actually smoke and use tobacco products until I started developing, my asthma started getting worse and worse and worse. And my parents at the time didn't know, like enough knowledge about tobacco products and the harmful effects they can have on people in their lungs, until we went to the doctor, and the doctor was basically like, "Hey, y'all should not be smoking around your toddler that much, like, hey, be careful." So my mom quit, woo-hoo! And then my father also started using less and less. And so that kind of stems from why I want to make sure, like, we live in a tobacco-free, we have a tobacco-free generation.
Okay, greetings, everybody. I am Mrs. Burnside. I am the sponsor of HTB Strikers in Corpus Christi, Texas. Our high school is a Harold T. Branch Academy for Career and Technology. We are an early college high school. And I currently serve there as a science specialist, but I also host, I sponsor the Student Council and, of course, our HTB Strikers. I've been involved with youth tobacco prevention since 2007. And, and I've been the sponsor of Drug-Free HTB and HTB Strikers since fall of 2015. So let me give you a little bit about my story. Okay, um, I didn't realize that I was involved in tobacco prevention a long time ago, but my mom passed away in 1998 due to lung cancer. She was not a smoker, and she was 49 years old. So she was pretty young when she passed. And when my dad was a smoker, however, and my aunt and other family members of my mom's family. So we're pretty sure now that we know more about secondhand smoke, that that was probably how she got lung cancer and how she died from it. So that was a devastating blow to myself and my siblings, to my whole family. And so because of that incident, I never became a smoker. So I, I am proud to say that I've been tobacco-free my whole life, so that, yeah, my whole life. So that's a good thing. But I didn't really realize that I had become an advocate until 2007. So I was living in Anthony, Texas at the time, and teaching at Anthony High School, and got involved with the Say What program that summer when our region, Region 19 invited several, actually, all the schools in the region, they invited us to go to this tobacco-free conference. And I was like, "Oh, that sounds like fun. I should probably do this." And so I had sent permission slips and information with several students, and only three young men had got back to me, said that they were interested in going. And at the last minute, all three backed out. So my son was available. So I said, "All right, son, you're coming with me to this tobacco-free conference." And so, summer 2007, he and I boarded the bus along with tons of other Al Passauans, and headed to the Woodlands for our very first Say What Tobacco-Free Conference. And it was amazing. It, it changed my life. I, and so the first picture up there is my last group at Anthony High School. Those were all my seniors that were graduating that year. And so that's, that's how I got started. And then when I transitioned to Corpus Christi in fall of 2015, and I got to Branch, and of course, they didn't have a tobacco prevention group. So I just, you know, brought it up, if that was something that the students were interested in. And they were like, "Yeah, let's do this." And so we couldn't come up with a name, and so we came up with Drug-Free HTB. And so we kept that name for a little bit. And, and but after Ruben joined our group, he was the one that came up with HTB Strikers. And so we changed our name to HTB Strikers. And so there we are now. And, but I, I'm currently finishing up my Master's in Public Health. So I've been fortunate to get to work with Say What this summer on a lot of different projects, and it's been excellent to get the, to get to see the, the backside of what everybody at Say What does. And it's a lot, a lot of work, and I'm super, super thankful and blessed to be a part of that.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Burnside. And so thank you also to Blake and to Ruben for sharing a little bit about themselves, their introduction. So what are we going to be talking about during this breakout session? We're going to give you a little bit of a program background. So more information about the Say What program, how it got started, things of that nature. We'll look at the different resources that we offer. There's a large, there's a wide variety of resources that we offer, whether they be online or in person, so that would be the trainings. We also have leadership opportunities and then just tips for success on how you can try to get the most out of the Say What program and what is available to you. But I wanted to show a quick video, I think, that does a good job of kind of giving you an inside look as to what Say What is and what it's like for youth to be a part of this, this program.
Say What is unique in the way that it serves as a catalyst for groups who are passionate about tobacco prevention.
They prepare us to be advocates in our community.
And as you get more and more involved, you learn a lot more about how to develop yourself as a person, as a leader, and as an advocate for tobacco prevention.
We get the opportunity to jump in and lead people to this big goal of being big tobacco, and that, to me, is amazing.
I have learned a lot about the actual statistics and the numbers of how many people are affected by tobacco use.
Being a part of Say What, I get the opportunity to share that on a statewide level.
It's fun, to be honest. I love giving presentations and training people and seeing the aha moment in people and those eye-opening experiences.
And that they can come to our events and learn how to make a difference in their communities, and then take it back and create that change in their communities and then on a larger scale so far statewide, and then potentially even go larger on a nationwide level.
Once people know that you're trying to make a difference, you've already made a difference.
Okay, so our program has been a statewide tobacco prevention program since 2000, but it wasn't coined Say What into 2010. And we've been receiving funding from the Texas Department of State Health Services since 2010, coined under Say What. And so our statewide name, it came from almost a similar setting as to what we are now, except the major difference being in person. We had a statewide tobacco prevention conference, and there was a, a large amount of youth participants. A couple hundred youth participants had joined for this conference. And we had worked with them really hard to figure out how we could come up with an umbrella term, I guess you could say, of what, what we could be identified as, as the statewide youth tobacco prevention program. And one of the youth participants came up with Say What, and it stands for Students, Adults, Youth Working Hard Against Tobacco. And so since then, the program has evolved to include numerous other programs within the movement. And even though each year brings a lot of change, for instance, this year has brought a significant amount of change, one thing has always remained consistent, and that has been the youth involvement. It really is created by youth for youth. And this program, it still continues to be youth-led today. The Say What Teen Ambassadors and consultants are our teen advisory board, and we collaborate them, with them on everything. And they truly are an extension of our staff, because they work with us in every aspect of the program. And later on, you're going to get to hear from both Blake and Ruben about their experiences, their involvement, not just being a Teen Ambassador, but also their involvement and what they have experienced as a youth member. And so I think one of the wonderful things also is that the Say What program, it focuses on really connecting youth and youth groups to each other and their schools and communities. One of the things that we have created to ensure and kind of help get youth groups connected all across the state is our member portal. It's on our homepage or Say What homepage. And there, you're able to register your group. You're able to log in, register your group, create an account for yourself, and you receive instant access to collaborating with youth and youth groups all across the state. It also gives you several other exclusive materials and resources and whatnot that we'll cover a little later on. But also, it's a movement focused on developing and maintaining youth advocacy. We recognize how important that is. We recognize that youth advocates, they need education, and they also want opportunities to put that education into action and, and really do their part in leading their community and their state, whether that be to increase awareness in their hometown or their school or maybe to work on policy advocacy, taking those efforts to a whole other level. We like to be able to provide those opportunities, whether that be through training materials, resources, and physical resources, which again, you'll get to see a little later on. Also, something that's really exciting for us is the fact that our movement has reached over 1 million Texans. And, and it's not just the staff. I mean, it has gone from a small tobacco prevention program to something that is humongous. I mean, it incorporates so many youth advocates and so many youth leaders from every inch of the state, working together to impact and educate over 1 million Texans since 2010. And that's a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of wonderful things that these youth advocates and leaders have done. And, and they've all worked really hard, not just by themselves as a youth group, but incorporating their youth sponsor and, and collaborating with their community and getting, really trying to understand the importance of how every, everyone works together, understanding the importance of how your youth group, how it connects with your school or your community. And that's going to be a lot of wonderful information that Ms. Burnside is actually going to get to talk about a little later on. So at this moment, I'm going to pass off to Ruben, so you can hear what he has to say.
So I hope you guys are interested already in what are some things that Say What has to offer you guys and your youth groups. Man, there are so many resources that Say What, like, really has to offer on the website whenever you become a member. And I can just say, like, these resources are so amazing. There's so much time and effort that's put into them, and you'll be able to see that once you guys, like, are able to go and look at the resources. Some of the resources that we do have, which, by the way, are completely free, I'm going to repeat that one more time, completely free, are, we have some downloadable resources. We have PowerPoint presentations. So in case some students, like myself, I've actually used one of these presentations before, like, don't have the time to be able to create or customize their own presentation, Say What already has pre-made presentations for students to go ahead and download. It is so great, and it is so easy and really accessible. Yet, free is always good, for sure, including whenever it's good resources like these. We also have educational handouts and worksheets, some of which you guys are going to be able to have in your journals that you guys should have received for a conference. Tobacco-free school signage. Whenever I was in high school and Ms. Burnside was my sponsor for the group organization we were in, we were able to get some of these signs and actually help place them up around the school. It just made the school feel more tobacco-free and also just give that common courtesy of everybody being able to know, like, "Yeah, our school's tobacco-free." We also have guides and tip sheets, guides and tips to presenting, whether it's to your peers, to administration, to state and local politicians, which I'll be able to talk a little bit more about later. And then we also have some educational videos. Really quick in the group chat box, do you, have you guys really enjoyed some of the videos that you guys have been able to see so far during conference? Or also the video that you guys were able to see during this presentation?
What'd you do?
Right? Really get the point across of what we're trying to do and also the movement that we're all, and also the movement that we're trying to be able to push among youth. We have so many really good and really inspirational educational videos on our website. I personally have gone through every single one of them and watched them all. When I tell you these videos are so good, they're so good. And they're not only good in tobacco prevention, which is really important, of course, but they also teach youth on how to be able to use their voice whenever it comes to public speaking and leadership skills. We also have mini-grant kits. These are so good. Okay, I love mini-grant kits with a passion, and let me tell you real quick. I'm gonna say it again. I've said it like four times already, but I'm gonna do it. They're free. What you're able to do whenever you become a member for Say What is you're able to request mini-grant kits for whatever projects you guys want to host at your school or be able to complete in your community. These mini-grant kits can range from being able to get t-shirts, to stickers, to even tattoos, to hats, all completely free. And all this stuff just is to be able to better the movement for tobacco prevention in our communities and to be able to help raise awareness. We have Red Ribbon Week mini-grant kits. We have Quit It mini-grant kits for if organizations or groups are trying to spread awareness on how to quit using these harmful products. There are so many, and I'm gonna say it again, I'm gonna say it again, completely free. You guys don't even gotta pay shipping. There are so many good resources. Now, I kind of want to talk to you guys about something else that Say What offers. So I kind of talked about it a little bit, but I wanted to go more into depth. We have online trainings, so you guys are going to be getting so much good information during this conference, so much good information. But if you guys do want more information, we have more trainings to be able to learn more about tobacco prevention history, but also to be able to learn more about tobacco products. So we do have these modules, and they're great. I personally have also been able to go through all these modules. And the videos, amazing. The Say What staff have put so much hard work into these videos, and you can really just tell from how good they are. Kathleen said earlier that this is a youth-to-youth, that this is a youth-to-youth organization, and you can also tell we're able to put our input and some people, other sponsors that you may know, might have been, been able to be interviewed for these modules and trainings for you guys to view. We also do host webinars for specific events or trainings that we feel like you guys should be able to learn more about, and I definitely think that is something really important as well. We also have Say What Action Summits, which I'm going to be talking a little bit more about on the next slide, and the Say What Texas Tobacco-Free Conference, which you guys are at virtually this year. So I have been, okay, so before this presentation, I wanted to try and count how many summits I've actually been to, and I lost count at 10. I have been to so many different Say What Action Summits. It is crazy. But let me just tell you, each time and each summit is still mind-blowing and is still really engaging and important and just awesome. These are youth-led all-day trainings. They take place on a Saturday. Whenever we say youth-led, what we do is we're able to help provide some information to the Teen Ambassadors, who you guys have been able to see in and out of this conference, and they actually present to the youth. Reason being is because we feel like there's a lot more engagement whenever it's youth talking to youth instead of an adult talking to youth. So that's why this is youth-led, and you can definitely tell that there is a really big impact on and influence on the participants who come to the summits. There's also leadership and team building. We always have different activities to try and help promote team building and also leadership skills, all the way from how to properly communicate to being able to write an elevator speech to a random citizen if you're trying to, like, get them to, if you're trying to get them to sign a petition. There are so many different things that are available at summits. Interacting and meeting with new people, community service projects and hours. For everybody who does go to the Action Summits, everyone gets hours, community service hours, which it is so, so great. And like, the hours and the projects that you are able to plan at the Action Summit is great. And again, I'm gonna say the Patricia's favorite F-word, "free." I'm saying it again. It's completely free. Breakfast and lunch is provided, and not to mention that after each summit, each group that does attend gets a free summit kit. So that way, they can take it straight back home after the summit, and you guys can go ahead and develop your projects. Like I said, I've been to so many different summits, and each one is unique in its own way and is really engaging for the community or area that we go to. You also, you guys get so much training, and it's just, it's really, it's a really amazing opportunity that Say What does provide for its members that I highly recommend. Unfortunately, this year, we were only allowed to have one Action Summit in South Padre Island, which I happen to be able to staff, because after the, after February, that's whenever the coronavirus really hit the United States and everything started shutting down. So we ended up having a virtual summit season online, which we posted about, and you guys are still able to view that, and it's a really good resource still. And we're hoping and we're currently readying up for the 2021 Say What Summit season for next year. We currently don't have any specific dates or places. However, we're readying up and getting ready to make sure that we're gonna be, we're gonna have a really good summit season next year.
Thank you, Ruben, so much for explaining our summits to everybody. And I highly recommend everybody to go watch our virtual summit. I was one of the TAs that was fortunate enough to staff that summit, and it went amazing. And as hard as it's, it is to believe that Say What offers more, it's true. Say What offers so much more help when it comes to tobacco prevention for Texas's youth. And that's including the Say What Conference that happens every single summer. This year, we did have to do it virtually, but we did, we took so much time to plan this, this conference out, and we're trying to have as much fun as we can possibly have and make it feel like everybody's there. Conference is one of the best experiences that I've ever had. It's an extremely interactive learning experience with lots of energy throughout the entire four days. In fact, we even do project planning tracks, which I believe we'll be doing tomorrow, to teach everybody about what projects we can plan when you get home to your community, and you'll actually be implementing these projects to your community. This can be sitting on or standing on the sidewalk with signs with your... This can be sitting on or standing on the sidewalk with signs with your youth tobacco prevention group. And you'll be teaching the drivers that are driving by how dangerous these, these products actually are. There's so many fun opportunities at conference, including a comedy and talent show, pool party, movie and game night, and there's so much more. As I mentioned, conference is so much fun and I recommend anybody who has the option to go, to go. And we see people that this is their first conference and we're trying to make this as best of the experience as we can, as we possibly can. But next year, we highly recommend everybody to go to conference. Plus, for the convenience of all of our sponsors, everything is in one location. So there's no need to travel for meals, recreation, or anything else. We really hope to see you next year at our Texas Say What Tobacco-Free Conference. Because conference is your one-stop shop for all your anti-tobacco needs. So next I'm gonna be talking about teen ambassadors and that's what I am. We encourage all Say What members who are willing to put in the work and time and effort to apply to be a Texas Say What Teen Ambassador. I have had one of the best experiences being a Say What Teen Ambassador. And as I mentioned in my intro, it has given me a platform in order to accomplish so many different things. I got to meet with my representative and my senator. And I was able to do stuff with another teen ambassador from where I'm from. And we were doing presentations at our school and we set up a little booth at our high school health fair. And it just gives you a platform in order to accomplish so many things. But I do have to say, it's not only about traveling across the state of Texas. You have to be willing to put in the work, time, and effort. And you have to be wanting to make change into the Texas youth lives. You want, you have to be willing to want to make these people advocates. And you want to be willing to make these people the future teen ambassadors of consult, and consultants of the Say What program. We highly recommend that sponsors encourage their youth members to apply to be a Texas Say What Teen Ambassador for the 2020-2021 Say What term. And we cannot wait to see who the, who next year's teen ambassadors are. But next, I'm gonna be talking about some of the things that, or I'm gonna be introducing some of the things that Say What actually does. And Say What does not only teach you about all these things, but they do everything in their power to make sure that all of the youth groups that are part of Say What can be as successful as they possibly can. But Ms. Burnside is going to explain that a little bit further for us.
Hello, everybody. Some tips for success. Some different things that your group can do. So there on screen I have listed mini grant kits, school-focused activities, community-focused activities, and continuing education. So with the mini grant kits, which Ruben had mentioned earlier, the mini grant kits can be used for so many different things. We used it during Red Ribbon Week. We've used them when we go out and do tobacco cleanups within the community. So when we would go and set up at, like at the picnic table at a park and then have the swag there in the picnic area. And then the kids will go out, do their cleanup. People will stop and ask questions. And, and then the kids would direct, direct the public to come over to the picnic table, get more information, and get some free swag. So in those kits there, we've gotten stress balls, we've gotten bracelets, T-shirts, sunglasses, cool cups. I've, I've had this cup for whoever. I love my cup. You name it, it's in there. Hats, frisbees, so all kinds of cool things that come in the, in the mini grant kits. And like Ruben said, all free of charge. And, but, but yeah, those things can be used either at your school or within your community, either one. Let's see. Maintaining your group's membership, keeping them engaged, and getting administrative support. There's always new things that as a sponsor that you can learn to get back to your group. And Say What provides that avenue for you. But in addition to Say What, there's, you know, a few other things that I use to help keep my kids engaged. We use things from Tobacco-Free Kids. We use things from Catch My Breath and from the Truth Initiative. And, and then sometimes my kids think of ideas and, and we go with their idea. And it's really what they wanna do. So in the pictures here on my screen, here we are at a couple different activities. The first one, at the top, we are at Cole Park, which is one of our children's parks downtown. And we had done a cleanup there, a cigarette butt cleanup. So the kids have gloves and, and little baggies to pick up the cigarette letter, cigarette butts. Any, any kind of tobacco paraphernalia, they are able to pick up and put into the little bags. And we do a account of the different things that we pick up. And, and I usually make contests between the groups, cause I pair, either pair them up or usually groups no larger than four. And they go out and, and do their, their cleanup. And, but I make it a contest and see who can collect the most stuff. And so they always have fun with that. The one right next to that, that's at school during Red Ribbon Week when we were X-ing out tobacco. So you'll see that that's always a thing in, that we learned from Say What. And we, that's what we wanna do, X-out Big Tobacco. The picture below that, we did a cleanup at the beach, one of our downtown beach. So not only are we cleaning up tobacco litter and spreading information to the public, but we're also helping the environment as well. And then the one with the bench that has the smoke-free area, that was actually at a hospital. And it was supposed to be a smoke-free area. And we discovered, and you can see all the little red flags in the back. Every red flag in the back represented a cigarette butt that my kids found. And the, actually, the, the, the director of the hospital happened to come out while we were there doing the cleanup. And, you know, asked what we were doing and we, we told him what we were doing. And he was like, oh, wow, I had no idea that people were even smoking in this area. And it's supposed to be a smoke-free area. So, so it brought attention to him. And other employees of the hospital got to see us out there doing our thing. And so it was very eye-opening for him. And, but we hope to do, we had planned to do a butt cleanup a few weeks ago, but then weather conditions and COVID got worse. But we are gonna try to do one coming up on August, I think, second or third, I think second. We're gonna try to do a cleanup that weekend at one of our local parks with social distancing. Kids will have, of course, on their mask and will have gloves and see what we can do. So just, just because COVID is happening, we don't have to, to stop doing things. Right? So helping maintaining your group and how to recruit kids. So Say What is based mostly for high school and middle school students. You, we do go out and talk to the elementary schools, but there's not really a program yet for the elementary level through Say What. However, Catch My Breath offers a vape prevention program for the elementary level. But for middle and high school students, that's our target audience. What you get to do while you have a group, you get to do community service projects. They get to learn leadership skills, team-building skills. I know at my school, the kids get recognized at graduation for being a part of the Say What program, of the tobacco prevention program. I don't know if that's true at other schools. But that's definitely something that you as a sponsor can bring up to your administration about having your kids get recognized at graduation. Of course, the kids are always interested in free trips and getting away from school. And of course, all the cool swag that they get to wear and show off to their friends. And they get to learn new information and how to share with people. The webinars and the modules that Ruben had mentioned are great tools to use. And they are great tools to use during a meeting. So when you're having meetings with your youth, that you can use those modules and the information so that your youth can become educated and then they can go out and educate more kids in their, in their, in their, in school and in within the community. So I know my kids, they would do lunchtime activities with, with the other students. They would have present, short mini presentations during lunchtime. So that, that's always a good thing. And, but there's so many different things that you can do with your students. But listen to your kids and they'll tell you the things that they would like to do. And that's what I always make sure that we're doing the things that they would like to do. And I'm, I'm just there to facilitate them and help them with paperwork, but it's really, it's their group. It's their choices of what, what we do and, and they do have a voice in our program. Let's see. Can we have the next slide? Okay. Collaborations. There's so many different ones that you could have with other youth groups. I know my kids, we collaborate with, our tobacco prevention group is a part of our student council. So they're automatically a part of both. We also partner up with our national honor societies. If your school has other organizations like FFA or FCCLA, those are other organizations that your youth groups can partner with. They can partner with community colleges. Our partner community college is Delmar College. That's what we have here in Corpus Christi. So actually, my youth did a presentation to the administration at Delmar College to help them with recognizing their lack of enforcement of their tobacco. They have tobacco signage up, but there was not enforcement of keeping the campus tobacco-free. So our kids brought it up to them and, and gave them some tips and ways on how they could do that. So that was, that was a very cool partnership and that partnership is still happening. And our kids are gonna be presenting again with, with the Delmar administration on making things better for them. Let's see, you can also partner, of course, with your local, state, and national organizations. And I mentioned a few of those already. If your area is lucky enough to have a, a TPCC, that, that's a great organization to partner with. There's other non-state-funded tobacco prevention groups that you can join, you know, community coalitions and such. Of course, Tobacco-Free Kids is a great national organization. Their website offers a wealth of information and a lot of things on there are free that you can use. And they have projects on there that your kids can use if you're having trouble thinking of projects for yourself. And of course, make sure you do, Texas Tobacco-Free Kids Day is usually in March. Unfortunately for us here in the coastal ban, it almost always falls during our spring break. So we have to create our own day either before we go on spring break or when we come back from spring break. So, but, so you just have to check out the date, see when it is and, and get something fun planned for that day. And, and, and make your kids plan it. That's it. They, they'll think of some of the coolest things to do for, for Tobacco-Free Kids Day. Then, let's see, Catch, like we mentioned, and several of you have mentioned that in the chat, that, that you have used Chat or that you at least have heard of them. And that is a group through CVS is sponsoring them. And they offer information about vaping and vape prevention. So, and as we know, that that is the new, uh, let's see, tool of choice, I guess you could say, and how to get our kids off of those products or not to use those products at all. But partner with your local attorneys and then with your local government. Our kids learn how to speak to all of these people through Say What. And so have them use those skills, have them writing letters, have them making proposals. They can do all those things. They, they really can. We, our young people can do more things than you ever imagined they could. And I've gotten to see it. My very first teen ambassador student was Nathaniel Fomby. And Fomby was teen ambassador, I believe, for three years. Then he went on to be a college consultant. He, he, he's no longer with Say What, cause he, he aged out. But I'm sure he's doing great things in his life because of being involved in Say What. And then I have Ruben now, who's a consultant. And then Alejandro is another one of my students. So I'm very fortunate and blessed to have some great young men who represented it, the state of Texas and their local communities very well in tobacco prevention. And it's, it's, it's a pleasure and honor to, to be there with the kids and to help them to grow and, and, and learn about tobacco prevention and the things that they can do. And, and they can, the sky's the limit. Really, and as I said, in, in, you know, here, we got involved, actually, this, the, the X-out picture, Ruben suggested that we get involved with during Christmas time. So we marched in the Christmas parade and we either wore, we tried to either wear our student council shirts or our, our, well, actually, we don't have Say What shirts yet, or our HTV striker shirts. That's something we're doing this year. We, we have a design, so that's gonna, that's coming for this year. But, but we had a different shirts to wear during the parade, but we had a sign. And, and, and we marched and, and shouted out tobacco-free messages during that parade. And then the other picture is, is my three upcoming juniors who presented to Delmar admin about their lack of enforcement of tobacco at, at the campus. And so, so we're, we're still partnering with them and helping to make things better at the campus. Because our kids go to school there as well as to our high school. And so they, they saw things that they didn't think were right and so they spoke up, which is what you're supposed to do. If you, if you see something, then say something, especially if you know it's not right. And you know, that's, that's our job. And so I'm, I'm glad that they, that Say What has given them an avenue to have a voice and, and the courage to do that. And I'm so thankful that I'm involved with this program. And who knows how many more years I'll do it, but as, for as long as I can. But even, even if I'm not doing it at the high school level, I, I'm sure I will be involved in tobacco prevention in some shape, form, or fashion. I, 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 I love it and I'm learning so much more about it. And definitely it will be a part of my life forever.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Burnside. I'm gonna stop, share the screen so that we can do some Q and A. See here. Okay. And then Blake and Ruben, you want to start your video? Okay. And then if you still see a grid view of all, a whole bunch of different boxes, there should be a speaker view in the top right-hand corner of your Zoom frame. If you'd like to click that so you can see us when we pop on and we talk, we should pop on as the main speaker. So we have about So we have about 20 minutes for questions. And while you guys think of whatever questions you'd like to ask our presenters. We did have one come in, Ms. Burnside, when you were talking about all of the wonderful cigarette litter pickups that you and the HTV strikers have been conducting. We got one from from Zalinda. And basically, she was asking what other what idea suggestions for activities? And now that we'll be going back to school and a good portion of schools will be doing social distancing or or virtual school?
Okay, um, well, we definitely, if we are doing something out in the community, it'll just be a small group. No, 10, 10 or less, definitely. And of course, we'll be in our mask and we'll have, you know, all our proper protective gear when we're out and about. So so we do still want to do things out in the community, but it will definitely be limited. So instead of doing things in the community like face to face, we're gonna be doing some things online. So my kids this year, one of their goals is to help our district have better tobacco policies. Because right now, it's just one saying, if you get caught, you're in trouble. But it doesn't say what that trouble is. So they're gonna be working on what what would be proper punishments. So they're they're gonna they're gonna make a proposal. So they're gonna be working on proposals to the district. They're gonna be working on how to help the community college with enforcement at their campus. So they're so they're gonna be working more on paper type things, more projects based like that instead of things that are going out into the public.
That's fantastic. I think that that is something that youth should probably be very aware of is what their schools' policies are, just to begin with, whether we are in a pandemic or not. Be very interesting to read some things because you might be surprised at how much opportunity exists for young people to make a change at their school level with their school policy. So go ahead and put all your questions into the chat and we'll ask them as they come up. A question that I have for you, Ms. Burnside, it may not be a question, but more of a conversation, actually, that I was having with Ms. Burnside, the teen ambassadors, and with our consultants, is how do what does a virtual presentations look like now that I think if the first month or two, or who knows how long, school will be virtual. A lot of youth really enjoy giving presentations in their school and their classroom setting. So how can students still deliver tobacco prevention education presentations virtually? What does that look like? Who do you need to collaborate with? Kinda anything that you can think of?
Um, well, I know like for our school, students are not gonna be allowed on campus at all for any reason whatsoever. So so they will definitely be presenting, if they are gonna present, they would be from home. They would, of course, get in touch with me and we would set up a Zoom or what's the other one? The Google Hangouts now is a thing, Microsoft Teams. There's there's a bunch of different ones that you could use to for your students to still be able to present information. They can they can record themselves doing the presentation. And then you could share that recording out to the members of your group or whoever it is that you're planning on sharing with. So it doesn't necessarily have to be live. It could be recorded. But but Say What offers PowerPoints and things like that already made. And so your group would only have to make minor changes to it if if they don't have their own things already. And and then they can use those pre-made presentations to present to the students. So that I think that probably would be the best way to go about it is for you to set up the Zoom and then and then send out the information about the Zoom meeting to whoever it is that you're trying to reach. Now, I wouldn't necessarily I wouldn't post my Zoom links on social media because then you're gonna get, well, you may not get anybody. We're trying to get into your meeting, but it's possible. And we've heard stories about things that have happened about, you know, strange pictures and such popping up in people's meetings. So so whoever you are trying to get the information to, make sure that you either have an email with them or you guys are in some type of group chat type thing where you can share the information there where only those people are gonna get that information. And and then, you know, let your kids know, hey, you can't be sharing this information out with your friends. This is for you, you know, yeah, with untrustworthy people, basically. So you do have to be careful with that.
Great. So we have an excellent question from Carmela, and this is for you, Blake. She asks, how does your circle of influence react to your work or involvement with Say What? Are they supportive or negatively critical? I think this is a good question for actually both Blake and Ruben, but Blake, let's hear from you first.
So I actually recently had an encounter with something very similar to this. One of the people that I used to call my friends was intentionally vaping around me. And there are definitely gonna be people like that because she knows that I'm in the Say What program and she knows that I'm a teen ambassador for the program. So there are definitely gonna be people that attempt to get on your nerves. But the goal is to try to inform these people what the dangers of vaping and using any products with any form of nicotine actually are. Other than that, I have had extremely positive reactions from everyone around me. Our principal was very supportive of everything we did. In fact, recently, we were attempting to change the policies of our school. And we brought the idea up to our principal. And then he basically went to the school board and he said, he agreed with us. He said, the policies need to change. So now our school policies are, if anybody is caught on campus with any sort of nicotine or anything like that, it will, they will automatically be sent to the authorities. The school isn't even going to be dealing with them anymore. But we get extremely positive reactions about our work in the Say What program.
Um, you would actually be surprised by how many, like, your circle of influence, by how many people would actually support you. And not only just your circle of influence, but the amount of people who are my age, but also Blake's age. Like I said, I am a college student, so I do work with, like, I work around my college with student, college, like, age students. So with that becomes more like working with older people who are like my age, 19, 20. And you would actually be surprised, like I said, by the amount of positive feedback that people have because a lot of people in our generation do know how harmful these products are. I personally have not had that much of a reaction where it was like really negative. I have had negative feedback, but it's really important to just remember too that you're there to educate and to spread awareness on the harmful effects of tobacco products, but also the new epidemic of vaping among youth. I really, I am very grateful and blessed to have like my inner circle be able to support me in whatever I do. And I'm very thankful for that. And I do know that a lot of other people may not have be able to have that network or support. But that's also another great reason why Say What is so important. Because you're able to network and be able to connect to these different students and schools and organizations where you do have that positive network and where you can let your inner circle grow to be more of an outer circle. So I definitely wanted to bring that up too.
Those are great responses. So something to keep in mind, we have a wide variety of those in the audience, whether they be at the school level, if they're teachers or administrators or the school nurse or they're a public health professional in the field. One of the wonderful things about Say What is that it doesn't, the youth group doesn't have to be created from scratch. It can already be incorporated into anything already happening. For instance, Ms. Burnside, aren't you the sponsor for the student council group? And that's you use the student council group to incorporate Say What into the program? And you did that starting with your student council group?
Yes, that is correct. So so my school, we had, of course, we had a student council group. And within that student council group at one of our meetings, I brought up the Say What program and explained what it was, what they were about. And the kids were like, yeah, let's do it. Let's do it. And and so they they jumped right in. And so so our tobacco prevention group is a part of our student council. And even though I do have about three or four who are kinda like the leaders for our tobacco prevention program, but they are all still student council members. Yeah, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel and you can use it with groups that you already have. And then as far as educating our our kids, I did, I teach science. So I did the vape prevention program that CAT offered. I did it in my physics classes during Red Ribbon Week. And I, of course, I talked to my principal about it first and she was like, oh, yes, please do it. Absolutely. So she, you know, she was all for it. And and so I I did it through my physics classes. So all my physics students received that 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 training and got certificates after they completed the training because there's work that they have to do while they do the training. Ruben Ruben did it. He was in my class at that time. And but I didn't do it last year because those kids had already received the training. But so my group that I will have this year, I will do it with them. And so they will receive that that vape prevention training. And I know that it's been updated and there's new stuff that's available to it. And so so they will get that training through my science classes.
So for Ruben and Blake, if there's a public health specialist who works in the field of youth prevention and perhaps they collaborate with different community organizations or they work with different schools and they want to kind of promote or bring this program into different organizations or schools, or perhaps they themselves want to create a youth group, what are some ways that you guys, any tips or advice that you can give them on how to connect with you all, how to recruit you all, how to retain your interest?
My suggestion would definitely be by taking advantage of social media. Almost all teens, middle schoolers, high schoolers, even elementary students today are using some form of social media. And I've noticed that TikTok and Snapchat are actually having lots of ads about the Truth Initiative. They're like spamming these social media platforms with ads about the dangers of using vapes and other tobacco products. And I think that it's a great way to start. But my tip would definitely be taking advantage of social media.
Um, a tip that I would have would probably be to be very real about what you want, what your your goals, what kind of group you want. Whenever Ms. Burnside introduced me, and I'm very grateful that she did introduce me into the Say What program. Um, she told me a little bit about what it was and I was like, okay, you know, let's go for it. Let's learn more. And so that being able to have basically what the words that I'm trying to get out is communication. You wanna be able to communicate very well with your new students who you're trying to get involved with this program, but also whatever other organizations or companies you want to be more involved with your the starting of your group and also being involved with the Say What program. Communication is very big whenever it comes to trying to keep youth involved and even college leveled students involved. Kathleen can vouch on this. It's a very big part of being able to help make a program more successful and have a lot more outreach.
So it sounds like outreach is one of the first steps, whether that be at some kind of community function or however you're able to collaborate with whoever is the outreach. And then if you have a clear, positive, honest message, that's important. And then, once you're able to bring people in, is just treating them like a normal person and fostering a healthy youth adult relationship so that they stay in there or stay a part of what they're trying to do. So Sachin asks a great question, and this is for both Blake and Ruben. How do you all stay so informed on the constant changing of e-cigarette vaping product market? It seems like there are new products all the time. He works in the field. He spends a lot of time researching as a student. It must be challenging. So talk a little bit about that.
Um, I'll go ahead and go first. Um, so one of the great things about being involved with the Say What program is that they update everything constantly. So for example, whenever it comes to summit seasons and whenever we present information at summits, information is always updated from summit to summit in case things change. So for example, we had images of the amount of youth who have had lung-related injuries from vaping and those numbers for each state, but we ended up changing them in all of our presentations to be able to match with the current updates. So I think that's very helpful and a really good thing to Say What does provide for its group members. And then also personally, I stay really informed by just researching myself. It's a really big, important thing. I think you being able to research and find the information yourself is so helpful. And also, I am I am a part of the youth and young adult youth, that's what I'm calling myself. And I am really involved with social media. And so social media is a whole entire space by itself. You see people talking about these products. You may even see people using these products. And so just being able to be in that space personally really helps enlighten me about and gives me information about, oh, this is new. What is that? And then me going later on and looking to see what that product was someone was using or what like someone on Twitter posted about.
Yeah, Ruben practically took the words right out of my mouth. That is one of the largest point, that's one of the largest perks of being a member of Say What. Us teen ambassadors are such a tight-knit group of individuals that are wanting to prevent tobacco use among Texas's youth. So we're always texting in our group chats about all of the updates that are happening with the legislation of the state government and the federal government and everything that they're changing to make it a safer place for the youth in regards to tobacco prevention. And as Ruben mentioned, our summits are always changing. You'll notice there will be some times where you'll never see the same summit presentation from year to year because it is always changing. And as Ruben mentioned, it's changing from summit to summit. That shows how quickly things change. And you'll see people walking down the street with this other disposable vaping product. And you're like, well, what's that? So you have to do your research on it. And it's taking it upon yourself to have the initiative to want to learn about these extremely dangerous products.
I will say, it's very interesting when you get to see youth, when when you share something that's very interesting with them, whether it be something from Dr. DeNoble or anything from this conference, you will find that they will, they pretty much start doing their own research to figure out what's going on. First, I think they wanna know if you actually are telling the truth. And second, they wanna they wanna discover the information for themselves. And so Blake is right. We have a group meet with the teen ambassadors and they post stuff in there all the time saying, oh, this state banned flavored tobacco. Oh, this state, before, you know, the country went Tobacco 21. This state raised the age to 21. And it's it feels very good to see that they take the initiative to understand the difference between state legislation, federal legislation. They follow the FDA. They look to see what the FDA puts out. They they are a part of their email listserv. And so I think one of the most important things is empowering young people to have access. First, to know that that is available and then showing them how to access that information so that they are up to date, so that they are current. But also, I mean, the puff bar, for instance, it's just this new hot topic kind of thing. And whenever that comes out, the TAs and a lot of youth in general And whenever that comes out, the TAs and a lot of youth in general, I mean, they're curious, you know, they wanna know what the heck is that? And so curiosity is something that they absolutely have a lot of. So I think we're at, right at 4:49. And so I want to thank everybody so much for taking the time to join. I want to thank our panelists so much, Blake, Ruben, Ms. Burnside, for the information that you shared, for answering questions. And I really do appreciate everybody's time being a part of our adult session.